Okay.
Good evening, I'd like to call the May tenth, twenty twenty-two Library Board Meeting to session at seven thirty-two PM. Please rise for the pledge.
Just gonna share the flag. Hopefully, everyone can see that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, Joe.
I would like to remind the public to use the raise hand feature. Andrew, do we have anyone who would like to speak?
Yes, Catherine, well, Catherine, so let me.
Okay, please bring her in.
Okay, you've promoted her.
Hello.
Hi Catherine.
Hi, thanks for letting me join.
Thanks for coming. Congratulations on an awesome book sale.
Oh, oh my gosh, it was the best ever. So, yes, it was very, very successful, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to join today. You may have seen, but we will be advertising more frequently, but we've raised over sixteen thousand dollars for the library.
That's awesome.
Which is awesome considering we had been on hiatus for four years and with all of COVID and everything, we didn't know what we were going to get. So, as always, we had an overabundance of donations. And for those of you that got to see it, that was only fourteen hours of donations. So donations are not the problem, but for the future, the opportunity is more selling and better pricing and better promotion to the community to get the word out. So, very pleased about that, about the sixteen thousand dollars.
And your volunteers were amazing.
Oh, we got so many new volunteers, which was so rewarding. We got over a dozen brand-new people walking in saying, I've never done this before, tell me what to do. And I said, okay, so hopefully, they liked it enough, they'll come back. We, you know, people that showed up on Monday liked it so much, they said, oh, I'll come back Wednesday and Thursday. So it was really a very, very positive event for the volunteers. Everyone was super comfortable, meaning because we had our outdoor people and our indoor people, and everything was very spacious, if you had a chance to see it. And I actually wanted to share with you that I got very positive feedback from one of our buyers, who comes every year, apparently. I had never met him before, but he walks with a cane, and he said, thank you so much for the bigger aisles and the wider spaces and putting all the things out the way you've labeled them. And he said, because I can't do stairs. So, I just thought it was a really positive experience, and we're going to be taking all those lessons learned for our future book sales.
That's great.
So, yes, a dozen new volunteers. We, the library was able to come in, and the librarians came in very, very discreetly, but we knew they were there. And they, they were able to capture over a hundred books to add to the collection at the Chappaqua Library, which is at a value of over two thousand dollars. So, while that, we didn't sell it, and but and they, but it is definitely valued to the library. So.
That's great, because we do know that that's a dynamic now where books are not kept in print as long, and then we want them and we have trouble getting them. So that's awesome.
Right, so it was really great. They were able to come in and find what they were looking for anyway, so it was very, very positive. Also, since it's been a couple of months since I came in, we have since launched our own sub-website within your website. I don't know if anyone's noticed that. But we now have our own, we control our own content for the friends. So what that means is people who click on your tabs and your information then go to our site. So it's seamless to the user, but it keeps us separate. So now we can take money and sell things much easier because we are our own 501(c)(3).
Awesome.
So, super cool. That sort of happened like by accident right before book sale, so. It's crazy. But yes, I did, I did want to mention all those very positive things. And the only other thing, well, I don't know if you saw my note, Liz, whether it's appropriate now or after this meeting, for the next meeting, I would like to revisit the Friends of the Chappaqua Library logo ideas, as the Friends are very interested in doing car magnets. And we think that at about five dollars apiece, we think there's a great market for that, and we have some upcoming events throughout the rest of this year and going forward. We think car magnets are actually very popular with our community. We think you might even buy more than one, since you may have more than one car. And it would be, or it could be a new promotion for joining as a friend.
That sounds great. Let's make sure we add that to a future meeting, whether it's the monthly or in-between even. Thank you for your update, really appreciate it.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else, Andrew, in the waiting room? You're unmuted.
Sorry, thank you. Not at this moment. I'm just removing Catherine to attendee. And no, nobody else has their hand up.
Excellent. Okay, so at this time, we are pleased to welcome our Westchester Library System colleagues, Nishat Hidari representing our district, Terry Kirchner and Wilson Aranya to talk to us tonight about the recent, I'm actually excited to hear about the recent investment you've made and how it addressed the attack. So I'll let the three of you, you know, unmute as, as you plan.
Yeah, so this is Terry. I'll really let Wilson sort of take the show, that's really what it's about. But really want to thank the library and the library board for actually expressing interest and showing interest. And we really welcome your feedback throughout this process, and, you know, we look forward to working with you more in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thanks for coming.
Nishat, do you want to say anything?
Sure, I just want to acknowledge what Terry said. Thanks for having us. And, you know, Wilson is, would be able to give you the best thing, as he's the expert in this.
Awesome, and thank you for coordinating for us, Nishat.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna talk about what happened, and we'll talk about some of the stuff that's underway already, and some of the stuff that's gonna happen because of this incident. So on April twenty-second, we were hit by a ransomware attack. It looks like they were in the environment for, I would say, several months on and off, from what we saw. They deployed what we feel is probably two separate attacks in our environment. Luckily, what we have in play was able to block some of their attacks, but this was a very sophisticated attack. It's probably one of the more clever, more sophisticated works I've seen in a long time. What they did is they basically put all our environment in safe mode, since they couldn't encrypt everything. And, and that caused a sort of a bit of a delay. We were able to figure out that issue, put our back on environment to play. What we did notice is some of the changes that they deployed out into all the computers were suspicious. I would say they, they may have long-term ramifications. And so we've been sending out our team to physically update and refresh all the Windows computers that are out there right now. That's sort of the strategy. I think we're probably being a little extra cautious, but we just, we just don't like what we've seen, in a sense. We're able to clean up the devices, but it seems somewhat suspicious. Some of the things that they did to the environment overall. Our virtualized environment was able to come up a lot faster, because again, the way our system works is things kind of recycle themselves every day. So even if you modify or encrypt or do anything to the systems, they get wiped out anyways, so none of that's impacted. We do have a backup mechanism for all of environment that, that does an image of everything and deploys to an off-site location entirely. We're looking at even how making that even stronger. So with that said, one of the things that we've been actually already deploying or in the works of doing is micro-segmentating the network. Right now, our current network is one big sort of spoken hub setup, where we're all in a private network. We've already signed a contract with Crown Castle in April, which is isolating every single library on its own location. And we are now in the middle of getting some new hardware, which will more specifically isolate each location. So behind every location, there'll be a firewall, and then the each location will be independent and no longer have any association with the entire network. So that's one of the first things that we've been doing. That was approved by the board in the last board meeting, so I'm very happy about that. That will make every library be sort of protected on its own. Should anything happen at one library, that library would be the only one impacted. I also think it decreases our footprints in the internet. In our current environment, all our internet traffic goes out through one pipe, basically, to the internet. So we have a lot of traffic coming in and out of one location. By shifting this into each location, this should minimize sort of our presence on the internet. We're also enabling more stricter Active Directory protocols in our environments. Where it's part of what we also been doing is setting up the email domains. That's another way for us to separate and isolate communication between organizations and groups. You know, those are the kind of things that we've been doing. Some of the stuff was already in play prior to this incident. Of course, the incident happened, so we were kind of prepared, but some of the things that we've seen are causing us to kind of become more rigid on the other side. So we're probably going to be enabling some multi-factor authentication, which means staffers at some point, depending on whether they're logging in, may need to use a cellphone or a second method to identify themselves before they can log into the environment. Those are the many things that we're looking to kind of go down the path. Are there any questions or thoughts about that?
Um, that was a great synopsis and really helpful in terms of us understanding what was happening, because, you know, we get a lot of emails and just having you walk through every step of the fix is, is great. And I, I really appreciate that we're trying to get each library to have its own environment. And I think Andrew has talked about making sure that we do training in our, in our environment to make sure that we don't inadvertently create any problems. And so I think from our perspective, anything that you can help us in terms of what we should be doing to support the, the whole system is helpful. And then, you know, when you just mentioned the multi-factor authentication, I'm wondering, you know, if we had a badge system, would that be something where the same badge could be used for multiple purposes, so that you know, the, the system could leverage one system that, that did authentication, as well as maybe checking staff in and out, or whatever, you know, whatever, there might be a, a way to have some efficiencies of scale around that. When you, when you look at what you're going to do, because I know that's something that has come up for us in terms of, you know, automation and where we might head in the future.
Yes, that, there's many avenues that can go down that path. It really depends on some of the sort of offerings that Microsoft has, since we're using some of the Microsoft products, but that is something we can investigate. We, we've kind of been, have some stuff already been done in the office internally that we've been testing that kind of do different things. I mean, we have basically key fobs and dongles that are associated that we're testing out already. So that is a possibility. I would say that we'd have to really figure out the logistics of some of that, because that's extra hardware that would have to be deployed, in a sense, especially with, with scanners and readers for certain things. But it's, it's, it's all on the table for certain things when it comes to authentication.
Okay, we appreciate that. Did anyone on our end have any other questions or comments? Shoray?
I want to know more about training that you might be offering to staff.
So we actually do have, it's ongoing training that we have when it comes to these kind of things. But one of the things that we've sort of said with the new SLA that is, they would almost require training that staff should attend. One of the things that we're also doing is we have, we have a big batch of monitors coming in that have work conferencing capabilities. And so we would be able to offer more remote training as well. We also offer training to a library, so should a library want individualized training for the location, that is an option. We're building a cybersecurity training program to offer and almost require every library to participate in. It's part of the shield act that we're trying to make sure that we fulfill our duties. So everyone should be able to participate and be involved in training. You know, it's one of these things where, no matter how much training you get, the sophistication and the level of sort of deviance of these attacks is so advanced that you may not even realize you've clicked on something suspicious. You know, you don't get like a warning sign. It just happens so quickly. A lot of times it even happens with network scans of activity that, that from traffic. So though we've, we've been able to pinpoint about nine or so compromised accounts, we really have not been able to pinpoint at what point they were compromised, or, you know, what led to that, that sort of situation. So it's, you know, we, we're gonna offer a training, we're doing stuff on our end, but it really is, it's really sort of a cat and mouse game when it comes to these situations, but we do have training in play.
What, do you have mock attack as part of your training?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Mock attack that you, you actually.
Not, we have not deployed anything yet. We actually have that in the works that should be happening in the fall. We're going to give, the first round, we're gonna give people a heads-up that we will be implementing this testing. But going forth, we will be implementing, we'll also be doing a penetration, penetration test, testing into the environment, a different sort of like simulated attacks that deal with it, but we will be sending out stuff to email to, to staff and people to see how they react and apply extra training on that.
Because training without that is not gonna work. You need to reinforce, right?
Yes, and you kind of let, you kind of have to let people experience or see what happens when that, when that doesn't go play. Yes, we, we do have that in the, in the wings for the fall.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add in that during this attack, like, we've assured that no patron data was compromised.
Yes, so our patron database is actually hosted on a different environment entirely from ours. And so it's not in our environment at all, so you have to go through multi-steps to get to, to that environment as well. But we have spoken to our ILS host vendor about that, and we're gonna be implementing extra features to even more, make it more difficult to even get to that environment, especially during off-hours. That's something we're doing, but the patron data, data was not accessed or compromised.
Well, great. Andrew, Ronnie, did you have any other questions?
I, I was just gonna ask about training, but Shoray asked about that, and that's important, and I'm glad to know that there will be training.
Yeah, I just want to say, I believe you did a very good job during this whole situation, and you know, I can see you've definitely learned from the attack that happened several years ago, that repeatedly took down other libraries. So you know, glad to see we're moving forward, and I'm really happy to hear about the segmentation.
Oh, yeah. Like I said, we've been in planning this probably around the same timeframe. This has been many years in the works. It's just, we, we hope that, you know, the next time around, that whatever incidents may happen, one of the things that we've discovered is that most of these attacks are almost very common, in a sense. It's just depending how quickly you can get to it. So one of the things we're working is also on finding additional funding for extra avenues of protection that may not be common to, common to a library environment. And that's something that we're really trying to see what we can do to bring in an extra layers of protection, which may not be part of the current library environment that we're providing. But that's really, we need to find funding for it, but we're, we're looking at all the options as we speak.
It's interesting, like you wouldn't, you know, in the early days of the internet, that was the banks that needed the protection, and that's where the development was. And now we're finding that we need some of the same things that other institutions have. So that's, I'm glad that you're continuing to be persistent about the network and Nishat, I'm glad that your board approved funding. And, you know, we're, we're always ready to talk to legislators and work with you guys to make sure that the county is well taken care of. So thank you for coming tonight.
And I appreciate that. I'll say this much, one of the things is that's been very hard is for people to understand sort of the, the context of what we are. A lot of people say, oh, you're just a library, you, you know, you don't have to worry about those kind of things. And that's not true. We've been, you know, we've been, we've been advocating, we're talking about this for, for many years now. So that's, I appreciate the support, and I appreciate you letting me speak here, because we're trying to let people aware, you know, it's not just, you know, books anymore at the libraries. There, there's so many services, and there's so much data that we possess, and, and data is really very valuable now. So we're doing our best, and, and we want people to hear that and understand, and to kind of be more advocates for the technology and the security that we can provide to libraries, because it's not just Fortune 500 companies that are getting hit. People are coming out to libraries, and a lot of library systems getting hit, so something people should be aware of.
So, thank, thank you for the work that you do. We really appreciate it, and it's nice to put a face to a name, because we get a lot of emails from you.
Please don't, please don't associate negative stuff with my email.
No, no, no.
I don't want to be the bearer of bad news all the time, so.
No, that's good.
I've, I've been hearing your name since VDI, whatever that was.
Yes, I've been, all the stuff that people have complained of in the past, Active Directory, VDI, and all those things that have been sort of brainchild and, and stuff that's worked through my, through my existence. So I, I sometimes used to hide because of that for a long time, but.
Well, I, I have a background in technology, and we always say that you never get the credit when things go smoothly. And it's always just the, you know, when things go wrong, we know that Wilson's working on it. And so I do appreciate you coming out and explaining how you're proactively moving forward, because I think it's important, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So, the next item on the agenda is my.
No, we have to do board administration, Liz.
Right, yes, board administration. Thank you, Ronnie. So we had we had two board meetings, one, the April nineteenth monthly meeting, and then a special session on April twenty-eighth. If there's no objection, I'm gonna move to accept the minutes of those two meetings.
Okay, well, we don't have to make a motion, so we could just.
Right. Yeah, so no changes, they're accepted as they were presented. And those, everybody can find those in the minutes on the website. And the third item is the authorized signatories for the bank, and I think, Ronnie, you have that motion?
Well, yeah, I have the resolution. So I'm going to read the resolution, and then I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution. So resolution authorized signatories for the library's bank accounts, whereas the Chappaqua CSD Public Library Board of Trustees have a fiduciary responsibility for all library funds. Whereas the library has chosen Valley Bank to provide banking services. Be it resolved that the Chappaqua CSD Public Library Board of Trustees has approved the following. The Valley Bank checking and money market accounts remove Taowin as signatory as of May ten, twenty twenty-two. And the resolution date would be May ten, adoption would be May ten, twenty twenty-two. So I move that we accept this resolution. So.
Do I have, do I have a second?
My second.
Shoray's seconding. All in favor? Aye.
Okay.
Okay, motion passed unanimously. Okay, um, for my president's report this evening, I would just like to mention that I attended a WLS training. And it was, it was very informative and will be helpful in terms of our policy development. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna end it there in the interest of keeping our meeting going. Andrew, can you give us your director's report?
Absolutely. For buildings and grounds, we've received the RFP for the outdoor master plan from our council. Mr. Link has updated the documents. The HVAC system has been serviced in preparation for the summer cooling season. For the art gallery, we are currently hosting an exhibit showcasing student artwork from the Bell Middle School. I've received the first quote for the curtains in the theater, and I'm waiting for a second quote to present to the board. We still do not have an installation date for the front curtain. They are waiting to receive the curtain from their supplier. As part of community outreach, a goal strategic plan, the children's department has been increasing its outreach with the Chappaqua School District and has worked with the school system to hold Roaring Brook Readers' Day on May twenty-first. This is an open house for Roaring Brook families with book displays, guest readers, book bingo, and library card signups. I have several personnel matters. Gemma Braun will resign from the position of page effective May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Kara Chong Olgubai has resigned from the position of page effective April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Taowin will be reinstated to the position of librarian, too, at the salary of eighty thousand dollars a year, effective May fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'm recommending appointing Megan Rose to the position of part-time available librarian, one, at the rate of thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents an hour, effective May tenth, twenty twenty-two. And lastly, I'm recommending appointing Dylan Marcus to the position of seasonal library clerk at the rate of seventeen dollars and one cents an hour, effective May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. The New York State Annual Report has been revised. Our staff assistant, Chantel, has begun a reorganization of the library's files. She's been training with Lisa Brown and has made great progress so far. And as Catherine mentioned, the Friends of the Book Sale held their book sale this month, which was a great success. We are personally grateful for the support the Friends have given to the Chappaqua Library. And then you also heard from the Westchester Library System, which was impacted by a ransomware attack this month. As mentioned, the system, library system prevented any patron information from being compromised and did not lose any data. They have been able to restore staff service and are in the process of restoring the public computer service. That is my report.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, um, we will go right into finance. Joe, thank you for your report. Is there anything you would like to add?
Not too much. I had the, the pleasure of meeting Chantel and working a little bit with her the last time I was in, and I think, I think the book, the bookkeeping, among other things, are in good hands. Andrew did bring to my attention that we have in, in our current year budget ninety thousand dollars that was, I believe, earmarked for capital. We have not moved that number into the capital balance. And I, I think we probably should do that. You know, it would have been done at the beginning of the year. But we can, we can do that now. Yes.
Ronnie. Well, you said the beginning of the year. What do you mean? Our fiscal year, you want to move it, you know, we can move it today.
That, yes, right. Well, we could have done it in July.
I see, okay.
That, that's, that's what I meant, so.
I think, Andrew, you had a thought in terms of the timing of, of which meeting we should be making that.
Yeah, I think it should be in July, since it's earmarked for the capital. We should immediately move it into the capital fund instead of having it just sit.
So what, why didn't we do it in July?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
That's why I brought it up to Joe and said we should do this.
Well, this, I, right.
It's, it's only.
From the last fiscal budget.
No, this is ninety thousand that was in this budget as the capital, and then.
Well, in the budget, it's just reflected as a, as a surplus of receipts over expenditures, you know, there's nothing, you know, in the budget summary that specifies that it.
Right, but it was planned money that would be for capital.
Yeah.
Plan that in the last budget. So it's, yeah, okay, so.
Ronnie, would you like to make a motion?
I sure would. So I move that we move ninety thousand dollars from the, what's the name of the account, from the operating account to the cap money market account for capital funds. How does that motion sound?
Effective.
Effective. Effective, say tomorrow, May 11th, 2022. So we need a second.
Show Ray will second. Okay.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Passed unanimously.
Yay. Very good.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Welcome.
Okay. So let's remember to do that. You should remember to do that in July. Because we, hopefully, our budget will pass because we have always had wonderful support from the community. So we'll have to remember that, or you'll have to remember that that has to get done in July. So.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I've made note of that. Thank you. Um, so now we'd like to review the April statement.
Hello?
Hey, Bill.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, I was tied up.
Okay.
Okay, we are in the middle of the finance section of the agenda, but we will be with you shortly.
Okay, great.
All right. Ronnie, do you want to make a motion to accept the, the April 2022?
Sure. I move that we accept the April 2022 statement.
Do I have a second? Show Ray, second. All in favor? Aye.
Okay.
Unanimously.
Yep.
Okay, review of the capital fund. I think we just made a really nice contribution to the capital fund as of tomorrow. Thank you, Joe. That fund's going to come in really handy. Yes, Ronnie?
I, we didn't really specify which, well, there's the 30,000 that's for the, the out, 300,000 for the outside. We have two accounts. So it would go into the one that has one and a half million, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's just the segregated banks.
Right.
We only have one general capital fund as far as accounting goes.
Oh, okay. I see. So you just separated it out like here, but in real life, there's only one account. Got it. So but where is it going to, when we see it next month, is it going to be with the 1.5 million or the 300? Or it will be, you'll surprise us.
I think it, it will go into the $300,000 account.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks. And do we still need to keep the roof?
The roof is zeroed out.
Okay.
There's, there's no, nothing at balance.
So does the item, the itemized line need to stay on here or?
Well, yeah, only because we had a balance at the beginning of the year. So we have to show it.
Through the fiscal.
That it's been used upward, you know, allocated or what have you.
Sure, sure.
So it won't, it won't show up in next year's financials.
Okay, yep. Um, okay, reviewing the, the May bills. I, I, I went in and counter signed. Thank you, Joe, for signing the physical checks with me. And I will now entertain a motion to approve the May 2020 bills. Ronnie?
I'll move that we approve the May 2020 bills.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor? Aye. Passed unanimously. Okay. All right. So we are now at committee reports. And Bill, we welcome you back. I think Ronnie want to.
Yeah. So for Buildings and Grounds, we, I'm going to turn it over to Bill to give his report. Since we haven't had a, a meeting, it's been a short amount of time since the last board meeting. And we were waiting on the RFP. So Bill, take it away.
Yeah, I'm very sorry. I'm, I'm in the car. I don't have any of my paperwork with me. I was tied up today. I'm just, I haven't even gotten home yet. But if you could read my report.
I'll read it for you, Bill, and then you can comment. Sure. So he re, he re-presented the draft RFP. And the lawyers have looked at it. So that's, that's that. And we'll be reviewing it. Right, Liz?
It looks great.
Okay. So thank you, Bill, for that. Then the next thing is.
Okay.
Had temporary repairs made to parking lot. Do you want to say anything about that, Bill? And thank you for doing it.
It was very inexpensively done. It's not going to hold, obviously, but we know that.
We know that. But it, but it needed to be done.
Yes, it had to be done.
Had to be done. Okay. Next, we have air conditioning started for season. At startup, the contractor found several items not covered under our contract. One is makeup water line to cooling tower was split, a short section of new pipe, and two couplings needed to be installed. He authorized the contractor to make the repair. There were worn out and gouged couplings on the condenser pump and the chilled water pumps. We had the parts in, in our stock. That was great. I, he directed the contractor to make the repairs and ordered two more couplings for our stock. The pressure.
Those are, those are important pumps. If we lose those, we lose air conditioning. So that's a common part. So we, we need to keep those on the shelf.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the pressure relief valve on boiler number two was leaking badly. He authorized the contractor to replace same and all work is now complete. Did you want to add anything? Thank you for taking care of that because it's really important.
Yeah, this, this just happened a day or two ago. And the total cost will be under the $2,000 limit. I, I have the receipt. There was four hours of labor and then the parts for that additional work.
Right.
And the AC is all up and running. We're ready to go. I think Andrew said it was a little too cold this morning, but that wasn't the main AC. It was one of the other units.
Right. Well, okay. Thank you, Bill. So that's, that's about it for Buildings and Grounds. And we look forward to getting that RFP and beginning to look at the scope of the work that needs to be done on the grounds of the library. And thank you so much, Bill, for.
You, you're welcome. I, I do have one question. Only because I put new dates in the RFP and I'll change them again if it's going to be more than a couple of days before the board reviews it.
No, I believe we're, we're ready to go with that. Andrew's making a few last minute, uh, last minute changes, right? And then I, I, I had sent through a couple of last minute changes. Mine are nothing that would impact our legal review or anything. And then I believe we're all, we, we've, we really appreciate the time you took and that the lawyers took to make sure that we have a solid RFP and we're looking forward to fielding that project.
Good, good. And I have four solid vendors that I'd like to invite. And I will find one more. And of course, I'll entertain any suggestions for engineering firms that have that capability, have those capabilities.
That's great. Thank you, Bill. We really appreciate it. And I know it's taken a little longer to get moving on that one.
Well, we want to do it right.
Yes.
Yes, I'm glad the lawyer put all those comments in and got everything, all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. So.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Bill.
You're quite welcome. Everybody have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Bye.
Uh, we need a centennial committee and a communications committee update, if I can have those in that order.
I'm, I'm going to turn it to Andrew to update us for the last few weeks that we have left before we actually have the centennial celebration.
We've begun hosting our actual programs. We have the Center Street Library for a Day event this past weekend. Coming up, we have several planting programs. We'll also be at the, at the farmer's market this coming weekend. Where I'll be at hosting the tent. The pole banners have arrived and have been delivered to the town to be put up throughout the town. The triangle signs have been ordered. I have been preparing an update for Ronnie and Shoray that I'll be sending out tomorrow with the exact names, invitations. We have a, an event flyer ready to go. We have a program laid out for the centennial celebration itself. And really staff have been buckling down and, and really implementing all what had been planned throughout the, the prior months. Chantel and I have been working on the refreshments. Tao has been working on decorations for the centennial. And we're, we appear to be in a good place. The time capsule has arrived. I've met with some, some members of the public who have reached out to me with some local history about the library. And we're really excited for this.
Speaking of local history, I wanted a compliment Amy Berger on the amazing work that she did on a history of the Chappaqua Library that I think it just needs a few more little edits and then it'll be ready for people to see. But she really deserves to acknowledgement and recognition for doing an amazing job. Show Ray, you want to say something too about that?
No, I just want to say the same thing, that I was very impressed with, with the work that she has done. And thank you for taking the initiative.
So please let, we will let Amy know that, how much we value her, her work. And so, so I'll just move into the communications. Is that okay, Liz? So basically, the communications lately have been tied in with the centennial because we're communicating a lot about the centennial. And I know, I want to make sure everybody in the community got a copy of the newsletter that has all the programs about the centennial with our centennial logo, which is fabulous. And I've gotten great feedback about our logo. I, people have said that it's modern, it's lively, it's colorful. And these comments came from people of all ages to high school students to our senior citizens. So it's making an impact. And if people did not get this, because I got it in the mail, which is unusual because a lot of times we don't get things in like mailings. But there are copies, Andrew said, at the library for people to pick up. And as far as anything else about communications, we, we haven't met since the last meeting. But what the communications committee is working on, work on is process and, and policy, you know, procedures and the flow of, of communication. Because that's something that's, it's part of the strategic plan. It was on the last strategic plan, as I have said since day one on this board. So that's definitely on our radar. So that wraps that up. Liz?
Thank you. Um, the policy committee did not meet this month. Again, we had a, we moved the, the time between these meetings as a little shorter due to the budget process with the school. So that actually dovetails nicely into the next agenda item, which is the budget. I want to thank Andrew for going and presenting to our constituents and our taxpayers through the school district meeting that was held earlier this month. Andrew presented the budget and concurrent with that, the budget is getting mailed out. It's currently at the printer or at the.
Post office.
At the post office in our mailboxes eminently. And we hope that everyone will go turn out for the vote on the 17th of May at, at Horace Greeley High School. The next item on our agenda is personnel. So now we will address the personnel actions that are based on Andrew's director's report.
Okay, so I'll start with the first motion. I move that we accept the resignation of Kira Chung Olgaby as library page effective April 22nd, 2022.
Show Ray seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Right. I move that we accept the resignation of Gemma Braun, library page effective May 15th, 2022.
I show Ray seconding. All in favor? Aye.
Okay. I move that we appoint Megan Rose, part-time available children's librarian one. Starting date, May 10th at $32.21 an hour.
My second.
Show Ray seconding. All in favor? Aye.
Okay. I move that we appoint Dylan Marcus, seasonal library clerk, beginning May 11th, 2022 at the hourly rate of $17.01.
My second then.
Show Ray seconding. All in favor? Aye.
And I just want to say something. I'm really happy to see Dylan back. He was a, he worked as a page in, in the teen center for, for years. And he was very helpful in getting the, if you like, the way the teen room looks. A lot of it has to do with the input that he gave to Kathy Paulson, the teen librarian. So happy to see Dylan back. Okay, the next motion. I move to end the provisional appointment of Taowin as assistant library director and to reinstate Taowin to the position of librarian two effective May 13th, 2022. At a salary of $80,000 per year pursuant to the guidance and directives received from Westchester County Department of Human Resources, parentheses, civil service.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Show Ray seconds. All in favor? Aye. Passed unanimously.
Okay.
Okay. That was all of our personnel actions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any new business? Okay. Well, then, if there's nothing else, I would like to request a motion to end our meeting at 8:19 PM. Who's a hand up?
Oh, somebody has, somebody has a hand up.
Oh, is that, yeah, Robin Freedom Friedman has her hand up. Would you like?
You could invite her in.
Invite Robin in.
Hi, Robin. Do you have some new business for us?
Thank you. I, I appreciate you letting me join. I actually just wanted to express my personal disappointment at the decision to move Tao's position. She's been an ongoing asset to the library in a reimagined role. And I think this decision is going to impede the library's ability to move forward on valued projects. I'm not aware of any efforts that were made to solicit input from the staff in making the decision. I wish that that had been made. And I expect that the change will have a negative impact on the functioning of the library and the future of the library. That's all. I wanted the opportunity to share that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other hands?
There are no other hands at this time.
Okay. And then I would once again request a motion to end the meeting at 8:20 PM.
I'll move that we adjourn the meeting at 8:20 PM.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.